All the meetings are ordered. It's 7:05. Welcome, everyone. We are in the auditorium together but apart, right? Socially distanced. We have a six feet of social distance between us. And we are meeting tonight. We do have Will Castello remote. He will be taking the minutes. And he, we are not doing a roll call tonight for votes, but please state your names so that he can accurately reflect in the minutes who moved and who seconded. Please make sure you filled out your health questionnaire before we begin. And then again, we are going to record this so that we can put it up for any one of you. Jamie, will you move on to further comment?
Nothing in addition to what's in the back.
Okay. We're going to move on to the business of the board, the approval of the minutes from the April 29th, 2020 meeting. Did everyone have a chance for review these? Were there any questions or comments? If not, may I have a motion to approve those minutes from the April 29th, 2020? We're hoping that we have.
It's Cindy Offsolo.
Thank you, Cindy. Second?
Dave, sorry.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Well, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Move on to the Finance Committee report. Will, Melissa?
We have not. This is Melissa. We have not met as a committee to discuss anything in advance. So I'm going to pass the baton to Will.
Yeah, I'll defer to my research work and ask personally if there's any specific questions. I know there's a lot going on, which I think I address more about the future forecasting in the forecast portion of the financial statement, which might be where the money went.
First of all, Will, thank you very much for all the work that you and Jamie Trent, everyone has done to do these forecasts for us. You know that we like to have as much information as we can. And so these tiered forecasts, I think, were very helpful to all of us. Can you just talk about, just to review it a little bit, where we are right now? I'm feeling pretty comfortable with our numbers right now. If you could just give a little detail.
Yes, sir. You know, where we are now, Rock River Library is in a good financial position, all things considered. And even with our forecast, we are lucky in that the majority of our revenue comes from real estate taxes, which potentially will be impacted by the COVID-19 crisis, but not an immediate impact. There could be a reduction in collections, which could impact us. But that's probably for long term, based on how the economy recovers from this crisis. So, you know, if you look at all three of the different scenarios that I've made out, when we made out some of the forecasts, you know, even if we were to spend all of the money that we've created, which is, again, not likely because we were closed for a period of time, we'd still be in pretty decent shape. The majority of our reduction in the general fund is just because we moved money to the capital fund. And that, that plan didn't change and shouldn't change. We want to maintain our building, our building, and make sure that we're keeping up our maintenance. That's important for the long-term viability of revenue.
Well, and actually, the timing works in our favor, too. As you noted, we do get so much of our receipts in the first three months of the year. Well, if there is a bright spot in all of this, it was the timing in the calendar year.
Right. Yeah. That's, that's perfectly well.
Does anyone else have any questions for Will regarding this? I know it's early days and we're going to be gathering a lot of information as time marches forward. Does anyone have any specific questions?
I will say that that's a good point, that what's important before any questions are opened up, what's important is that this is a living document. And I think, you know, I'll try to maintain it as much as I can as information comes in about our revenues and where we're spending.
Right. And you've been attending some of these webinars, trying to get your arms wrapped around as much of the information as you can. Are you anticipating many more of those webinars and other kinds of meetings?
I don't know better specifically related to library, but just with, you know, my account, there's a lot of COVID-19 economy-related webinars that I'll be kind of attending as well. So I think while it's not specific libraries, it will help in terms of understanding the overall economic picture.
I have a question about interest income. Can you hear me okay, Will? If there's a mask?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Looks like we're going down to $100K in interest income. Do you expect that for the normal case as well as your?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the thing with this as a living document. That's one that's kind of a shot in the dark in terms of, we know that the interest rates are extremely low at this point. And that's not going to go away. But we're lucky in that we did the letter CDs that kind of keep us at a respectable interest rate, which potentially will allow us to have a decent amount of earnings in this current year and going into the next year and forward. Because our balance in the letter CDs is a significant amount and we were able to kind of have a decent rate, all things considered.
Will, do you want to also just, I think we might have hit on it last month, but just our meeting with Brian from Fifth Third. And, you know, he was kind of forecasting that kind of steady decline in the interest rates as well.
Yeah, we, our conversation we had with him was, yeah, there's, you know, we don't know that the Fed is not going to be moving rates for quite a while now. I mean, that's, that is pretty clear here. I mean, it's going to take a while for the economy to bounce back. Even, even if the road to see if the pictures happen, it's still, they're not going to rate rates quickly. It's just not going to happen. But what, with what we've done with our investments with Fifth Third, we've locked in certain rates and certain returns on RCD. So we'll be able to have a decent return for, it's going to be a short-term period because we never locked in anything too long anyway. But we'll have a decent return, you know, over the next year, year and a half, especially in comparison to what the market rates are. Because we had already locked in some of this stuff. And we made sure that, that he knew we want to have more frequent conversations to be aware of any opportunities that we can jump on. We just need to be in more frequent communication with him. And I think Jamie had made that pretty clear. He was on board as well, so.
Gosh, do you anticipate any opportunities in the near future?
No. I don't, I don't anticipate any.
Yeah.
That's not to say that there are, there isn't something that could happen, but I don't anticipate anything. You know, we are also moving in what we can invest in. So that's part of this as well. And as a public, you can invest in certain things.
I think we're all pleased, though, in the open lines of communication that you guys have established. Does anyone else have any questions?
Is this the year today actual? Is that through April?
Correct. That's through April. Oh, are you looking at the, on the forecast area? Yeah, your scenario. Uh, yeah, that is through April, I believe, yes. You know, it's like that. Yeah, that's through April.
So what can we expect to see then from the forecasting at next month's meeting? Are you just going to build on more specifics?
We actually, so when Will and I, if I can end up well, we talked about August is probably the next time we'll have a really good update to this because of that July 15 income tax date. And some of that stuff's shifting. So I think August will be our, our best ability to have a better idea of what the rest of the year looks like.
You're talking about the property tax date in July?
Uh, anyway, so. Well, the income.
Oh, income, okay. Having tax date moved to July 15 pushes the NAP into the general fund for the state of Ohio. So the general fund for the state of Ohio is taking a big hit. A large portion of their collections happened on that typical April 15 date. Well, that date would move back to July 15. So, oh, we're going to see this dip in May. We're going to see a dip in June. We're likely going to see still a dip in July, but we could see a recovery in August based on that. Is that your sense?
Cindy, did you have another question?
I did. I had a quick question on the check register, Will. There were two payments to Opers on April 13 and then one on April 24. I just wanted to make sure that was correct. The two on April 13th is what you were mentioning.
That would have been the time that Rhonda actually wrote the checks. For that, so it would have been, it would have been up because we could pay every two weeks. So I believe that there was one checked up.
I think there was one that was, when they're bundled together, that one is actually from a prior payment that was done during that period because we were shut down and she wasn't able to be able to check.
Okay. So that was probably from the end of March, April period, maybe.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
And speaking of that, I do want to make sure that Rhonda has been doing a phenomenal job in her role. You know, she, she started March 1st. And officially, and she has been doing really well in grasping the concepts, getting a hold of Will, getting a hold of CMI, working with Will. Anything that Will asks her to do, she does it right away. She lives locally in River, so she's able to come in almost on a moment's notice if she needed to, even during all we were shut down. So she's doing a fabulous job. And I'm so glad that we're able to promote her from within and, and retain her for that.
Yeah, I will say that it's been very easy, easy to work with her. She's, you know, there is a learning curve and it's a really difficult situation for her and Cindy because she started out and then we shut down. She's taken, she's taken well. She's willing to do, like Jay said, anything that I've asked of her. She's willing to, if she doesn't, we ask her to arrange to listen, call and learn and figure it out. So I've been pleased as well.
All right. Any other questions regarding the financial statements? If not, may I have a motion to approve the April 2020 financial statements?
I move that we approve the 2020 financial statements for the month of April.
That was Melissa. Well, Melissa?
Thank you.
Jenny? Thank you, Jenny. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Will, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Would you like to do the gift report first or the tax budget authorization?
Gift report, there's no approval test. I think it's going to improve the report.
Right. That's page 15. So yes. Not much going on there, but we do need to approve it. Do I have a motion to approve the April 2020 gift report?
It's Cindy Offsolo.
Thank you, Cindy. A second?
This is Jill, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Okay. Now we'll move on to the Resolution Number 04-20, authorizing the 2021 tax budget. Will, do you want to just go through this and let everyone know? Just remind them again why we do this every year?
Yeah, so the tax budget is, we take a simplified approach to the tax budget. It's really, basically, it's a, it's a request budget, sort of, in that we're telling our taxing authority, we're not our own taxing authority. Our, the school district is our taxing authority to run the rock river library. We're telling them that we need a tax imposed so that they can collect taxes, you know? So the, it used to be a little bit different to how it's now. It used to be kind of like you put your wish list together and you'd be asking for a certain percentage of money that has to come your way. That's just not how it works anymore. Basically, there's a agreed upon percentage and we have voted on those with no opening received in terms of what's allocated to the Rock River Public Library. So with the tax budget, it's sort of procedural and then we just have to pass the tax budget to say that we need a tax imposed. We don't necessarily, we don't, we don't really do our budgeting work when we're doing the tax budget. We sort of use prior year expense appropriated numbers and then estimates on revenue that we, we'd like to receive. And then we do more of our budgeting towards the end of the year with our actual appropriations.
Right. Right. So at the end of the year, if you all remember, we'll receive a very detailed budget that goes line by line, whereas this is, you know, much more general for the taxing authority. Does anyone have any questions on this? Something we do every year. If not, may I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 04-20?
This is Melissa. I move that we approve Resolution 2004-20.
Thank you, Melissa. Do I have a second?
Dave, we'll start with that.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion regarding this? All in favor? Oh, we're going to go roll call for this one. Thank you very much. Will?
Roll call? Okay. Ms. Benarstie?
Yeah.
Ms. Tiffany?
Yes.
Ms. Shaefer?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker? Mr. Santoni?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Did you have that purchase order? $5,000?
Yeah. Yeah, the purchase order for window key right after, soon after we shut down, Rick had them come out, which was a good time. And this is a in-depth cleaning where they actually remove all the stolen windows and they clean inside and outside. And they actually come into the building and clean as well. So this is, it is more in-depth than the quarterly cleaning that we just have the outside of the windows cleaned on a quarterly basis. So this was, was in the budget. And so that's about it.
Any questions on that? And then, Will, the last thing on the agenda for you was discuss the reduction in revenues due to the coronavirus. Have we covered all of that so far? Anything else you'd like to add about that?
Muted? Are you muted, Will? We can't hear you.
Um.
There we go.
Yeah, I think I'm muted.
Okay. So it's time to move on.
So, no, I don't think there's anything I want to add other than I think this is a living document. We want to keep the board up to date on that. Jamie and I are being close attention to what's going on. And we'll know a lot more come August with regards to the PLOF meeting.
Well, again, thank you very much. I know the work that goes into doing something like this, but the board definitely appreciates all of this information and we'll keep a close eye on everything.
Yeah, well, last thing I'll throw, thank you. Last thing I'll remind you of that, you know, I know there's newer board members and it's been a weird time. If you have questions, just note that I'm available. You can call me at the office. If you ever want to talk about some of this stuff outside of the board meeting, you just have questions that you maybe aren't comfortable asking or you think something went wrong, don't hesitate to call and just email or call my office. No problem.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay, well, we'll move on to the Director's Report. Jamie?
Yeah, I wanted to expand upon a little bit my first, the first bullet point that talks about our reopening. So, so far, some of you have participated in groups I've picked up. And that started in May 18. I think that has been received pretty well. Coming up next week, June 1st, we will have additional staff in the building. We'll be returning to our normal hours of operation. We'll remain closed on Sundays. The schools are closed, so we'll remain closed on Sundays. So we'll have our summer hours. This will be really the first opportunity for staff, for most staff, to come back to the building. And Trent, all of the managers, but Trent in particular, has been working hard on pod scheduling, which is making sure that the staff are scheduled in groups and that those groups will work together in those same time periods so for contact tracing. And in talking to Sheri, most staff will be able to hit their regular hours with a combination of in-the-building work as well as at-home work. Some staff will only be at home. So for instance, Chanel Steiner, graphics, and Stephanie Oswald, they'll, they'll be remote the whole time. They've been carrying us on social media, InsideView, and everything else anyways. So, and it'll go to even Krista, for instance, will be doing at least eight hours from home. So she'll have two separate days where she does about four hours from home. I will be returning to the building as of June 1st. Sheri and Rhonda will be, the three of us, as well as the building services staff, will really be the constants throughout this time. I'll mainly, and most of us will, so Ron and I will mainly be secluded in admin so that we don't affect any of those pods as much as we can. The other good news is that those, mainly it's circulation and shelving staff that aren't necessarily able to hit the whole regular hours, the whole 100% of that based on social distancing guidelines. But there are other projects that managers have. For instance, relabeling, I think, the DVD collection. I think Peter says it's time to do another inventory of the entire collection. Things need, you know, cleaned. So we will be able to supplement those hours for the staff. So we, from what it looks like right now, and again, I think this is a moving target and this is kind of one of those living documents, so to speak, that we will be able to have weathered the pandemic without having to furlough or lay off staff. And I think that is something at Rock River that we can be proud of. I think that's something that the board has, and administration, has always prided ourselves on, that we will do everything we can not to have to lay off or furlough staff in any situation. When we had the financial crisis in 2008, we really look at attrition is really the way that we look at, at streamlining our work processes and stuff. So we can all be proud of that. I think the city would be proud of that as well, that, that we are maintaining that level of service.
Maintaining that level of service, I think, is exactly the point that I was, support your assertion, but we've done what we've done. And at the same time, our staff have done and remain in charge, I think, serving the community in such a time. So it is just something that I think, I think, I know we're all proud of. The staff's been helping us.
And as of this point, as I mentioned in here, we have until, we're looking to basically take them on to June. So hopefully by June 29th, we will look at offering additional services where we actually maybe can invite some patrons in. But that would be things, as I mentioned, hospital lobby service, caffeine, vaccine, and/or some internet use. So we could maybe use the space here in the auditorium and have maybe two-hour blocks where people can actually sign up for those appointments. And that, we know that we'll maintain those distances. So that would be the, the next likely step for us. We do have other technology solutions that are coming into place. We have a solution called Living Affairs, which allows for some additional remotes, reference-type questions. And there is actually a desktop, a remote desktop component to it. So if a patron were having trouble filling out a form, for instance, a librarian could actually connect to their computer and assist with that type of form as far as what they were doing. So, so it's a combination, kind of the hybrid of in-person and telephone and virtual. So.
I thought it was very telling, Trent, I don't know if it was your report or Jamie's or yours or one of the department reports, that someone noted how glad patrons are to call in and the phone is, you know, answered by someone they know and they can reconnect in the time of so much disconnection. It just shows what kind of community relationship we have, I think.
Are there any other questions about the report specifically? I've got a couple other things that I wanted to mention beyond that.
I've said the website's completed. Is there a final cost for that? Do you want to talk?
It was, I can get that. I believe it was around, because we ended up getting a refund from the previous vendor. And then whatever we paid, but we paid that a while ago, last year, early on. That was, the payments were completed and then it turned into just Chanel having to go through and update it. So that was actually unveiled in December of last year. But I can get that. I don't off the top of my head. I'm not sure. Melissa?
I've got a question. I'm just wondering about receiving the materials back into the library. How are all of that selling? What percentage has been returned? Are there still a lot of things that are checked out? Is it constantly?
So I can answer some of that and I'll, for statistics, I normally ask Peter. So Pete, if you want to see what you can do as far as actual numbers, but it seems to be working well. Everyone is adhering to dropping things off to the book drop. We even have our staff using the book drop. Everything goes directly onto the shelves in the sorting room for quarantine. Right now, they're still quarantined for 72 hours. That is the absolute safest timeframe that we know of. Next month, we should get the updated information from the study that was done. And after the 72 hours, so all the shelves, those materials are labeled. And then those items are actually checked in at that point and then they can be put on the shelves or they'll go directly to the whole shelf. So that is, I would say, working very well. And Paul and Bridget, for the most part, have been doing most of the cert duties during these last couple weeks. And I think that they're a fine tuning machine at this point. So, yeah, that is, that is going well. Pete, do you have anything? Or we can go back to that. We can come back if you want to look into some of that.
Yeah, I can kind of look it up here.
I'm not sure of how much, you know, materials that.
I will say the sorting room is full. So I don't know how many that room holds. The shelving has been a little slower with reduced staff, so. But people have been returning items.
It was completely, and we had it completely empty. It was completely and we had it completely empty prior to the May 18 um opening to make sure that we weren't sure what what was going to happen, you know, how much if people were going to bombard us with all of those return materials. Or I and I think uh when we announced curbside, I know there were a couple of questions where people um had asked if they have to return the items. And so we've still got people that maybe aren't even through all of their items necessarily. So um and they dump and there's still no finds or pieces on them.
Thank you. I just wanted to say kudos to the staff. I've used a lot of the services and closure. I've um come for curbside with four times now. So in the limited time, we put a lot of stuff on hold and then it's available and it's an outing for my kids. Everyone's been so helpful. Um it's been great. They haven't opened the trunk, so there's literally no contact. Um and and it's been wonderful. I also, we also, my husband used a service with emailing the reference desk with three books that he has loved in the past, and they gave him a list of 10 books for him to to check out that are similar and told told him why each one was similar or related to the ones that he had read. And we were just very impressed. Um I also called children's services specifically to ask to um check out something that is not, you can't put it on hold through the catalog, um some technology pages. And they were able to get back, check it out for me. And then I was able to pick up the curbside. I just, I can't, I just want to say praises of all of your staff because they have all been so helpful. It it feels like, I mean, we miss browsing so much, but we have been able to access so much of what the library has offered. So thank you.
I received many comments from people who they'll text me and they'll say, it just feels so refreshing and sort of normal to be able to go to the library and get that same file and just have friends that we love then.
Yeah, one of one of the cool things, because I do, although I don't post often at all, um but the community page, I did monitor it. Um and once, there's been a couple times where I've seen people that are take a puzzle, leave a puzzle. And so um that, all of the, pretty much all of the puzzles went out, right, um when we announced that we were closing. And I saw a couple posts where people were like, you know, if you have any library puzzles, if you want to try to do a porch tray, you know, or, you know, we'd be interested in getting a different one, just make sure that, you know, it gets back to the library at some point or it gets, you know, passed on. So that was that was really neat to see on the community page as well. So. Um and then one other thing, uh just to mention from my report is, um you know, talking about um new Charlotte Blaser is the, you know, our new children's manager and talked about, you know, she didn't even, she wasn't even able to step foot in the building for, when did you first give her the tour, Trent?
Oh, it was about three, four weeks ago.
Yeah.
So she was, oh, it was about three weeks ago. So she was about a month and a half in before she saw the library.
Yeah, and so.
For an interview.
She's been doing a wonderful job virtually, keeping in touch with her department and meeting the department and and being in contact with Trent through all of that as well. So um, you know, definitely different times than we ever thought. Um so a couple other things. I was asked about potential liability um to the library with uh COVID and whether um we have any liability as far as uh people being able to maybe say that they um they got it from the library or from the materials that were checked out or a staff member, et cetera. So I did um I messaged Jim Williams, who's our attorney, our labor attorney. And Jim mentioned that um if an employee can trace their contagion to the library, which is, as he says, is not an easy task, the only thing the employee should get is workers' compensation benefits. And he said the V W C has indicated it's going to take a tough stance on coronavirus cases outside of industries where contagion is more suspected, such as healthcare and law enforcement. Workers' comp being the only remedy for employees is largely a good thing. However, a workers' comp claim could cost the library some money and and that claim would be both tragic and expensive. And then he mentioned that um he's not the right person to ask about potential liability if a patron could prove that he or she contracted coronavirus. And so he um uh told me to get in contact with our insurance broker, which I did. And maybe um Jill, you you might have some thoughts on this as well. So Paul Benardi, um who is at Pinkerton, um I I gave all of you a um attachment that he gave me. Um so Melissa, I was hoping that maybe you and Cindy could maybe um read through that if there was anything we needed to um know about, because I got lost in like paragraph one of of that. But um he says that the insurance questions during the COVID-19 exposure has been a quote hot potato in the insurance world, involving governmental interpretations, plaintiff attorney's creativity, the medical world, politicians, and a touch of paranoia. With that being said, he attached the information that I gave you from a legal viewpoint of business liability, and he included the definition of bodily injury in our actual policy. Um so he's saying it's impossible to adjust the claims based on hypothetical situations. Proper precautions would be at the core of any defense. Uh and um you'll have further conversations to add to the responses we go. So basically, the other aspect of this is as all of you um filled out the staff questionnaire, um our staff has directed before their shift to um fill out a health questionnaire. They've been advised not to come to work if they have any type of temperature. And I believe the official one is 100.4. Um so they're they're told not to even report. Um we have mandated masks in public areas. Um so for employees. So for instance, if I'm in my office, um I would not have a mask on. But if I leave my office, I would put my mask on. Um uh staff has been um um uh, you know, all of the the five um recommend uh requirements the governor has, um we abide by those. Sherry is very much in charge of all of that. So I think in just being able to basically show that we've taken the necessary precautions, 72-hour quarantine on materials until we get that additional study. Um so I think I would never say that we can't say that we have none, um especially with the way that that people, you know, as Paul said, that people can be creative. Um but I think that for the most part, we are pretty well protected. Jill, do you have anything to add to that?
I think the only thing I can say is, what you already, when you outline, here's how we're protecting staff and the public with our precautions, what we're doing already for the 72-hour quarantine, documenting all the things we're doing and the fact that we are following through with it and we're being consistent with our approach, I think that's our best attempt. That's our best attempt because we are, we're doing exactly what we're supposed to and probably even going above and beyond to protect the public and our employees. I think all those measures with the documentation and our follow-through is what we've got to do. And I think that's the best effort. Everything I've been hearing in the marketplace and from other brokers, I mean, I think that's what we're doing. It's like you're doing everything. Thank you.
Did they then import thermometers to check people's temperature? Take them with them?
We had, we did have um three, three thermometers that we initially ordered, and they um proved to not work exactly. So we shifted to um having staff self-report as far as the temperature, to take their temperature um to to report whether they have the fever. Um and plus, that kind of eliminates a little bit of that step because there's there's some um issues out in the marketplace as far as, you know, the whole waiting time period of what what you're you're liable to for pay. So for instance, if, you know, staff should be um paid for the time potentially that they're in a queue, waiting to get a temperature check, waiting to fill out a questionnaire, waiting to wash their hands before they're getting to the desk. So um it just kind of naturally went to the way that it was. But we did initially, we did initially have, we tried to get. And then and then now you can't get, you know, Sherry searched and searched. So beyond the three that we had, we can't get. Melissa?
So the one potential um addition that you could make this for, that I've seen on other forms like this, is a loss of smell or taste.
That was a new question I was asked today, actually, by the DMS.
So I I would consider as, you know, we're talking about living documents, as some of the symptoms um come out in the news is, you know, this is one that actually is kind of an unusual one, but now it's fairly common. And especially the people who are asymptomatic, that would be one that they'll. So I have a cousin I just talked to today who lives in New York City. He had it for a weekend, and and he's pretty sure he had COVID and he had lost his sense of smell and taste and just felt really out during the weekend, but then that was bad. So I got that.
Okay. We will do that. All right. Um and then the 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 final thing that I had was um I think uh with my evaluation coming up next month, I did um email all of you prior, just prior to the meeting, all of you, to your library accounts, uh the answers to the my questions on the form. So I sent that directly to all of these accounts. So Davey should have, what you need from me?
Okay, thank you. I saw the email. I gotta hear.
Okay. That's all I got.
Well, not quite all, because now we need to move ahead to the other items.
Yes. Um Trent, do you want to talk about the Cowan donation?
Um, I can't see the document. Um I don't, uh Greg wrote up.
Yeah, he wrote that down.
I can't add anything beyond what what Greg would say um about that. So, you know, a lady um had this donation she won, and it was about three months ago at this point. And I do remember him being very excited. And he typically does not get that excited about donations, uh because a lot of times they're duplicates or not as good of a version of a written have. And we don't have the storage for more. So he was pretty excited about this one. So I think that's a good sign and then defer to his knowledge.
Uh the and just for your um further information and for um the newer board members, um we have um the the gift report that you accept each one is generally monetary gifts. We have specific policies in place that we do not accept any um physical items, whether that's Cowan or other, without board approval. Um there have been instances in the past where, you know, people have had family heirlooms and they thought that the library should have it. And so um it is a policy of the board that only the board can accept those items. So that is the other reason that this is coming forward to you. Um and I, as Trent mentioned, this is definitely something, and I think Greg outlined it very well, the reasons that he wants these pieces. Um so um I would I would ask that you approve um that donation.
And the reasons he listed uh do comply with the board policies, completing some of the collection and really enhancing it. Did anyone have any questions about any of the particulars? If not, may I have a motion to approve the acceptance of the Cowan donation?
This is Jill. I need to make motion to approve the acceptance of the Cowan donation.
Thank you, Jill. Or second?
This is Jenny. Second.
Thank you, Jenny. Any discussion about this?
The only, I have one thing to say is, um, this is just a great opportunity from a sort of donor recognition standpoint to to reach out to this family. And you're like, maybe you have a phone call or addition. I'm sure that there's a ladder involved. And I know that he's had one-on-one discussion with them, but if you have an opportunity to talk to the family, just to reach out to them, I'll let me personally write that.
Great suggestion. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? I have any votes. Thank you very much. Will, the motion passes?
Thank you.
Okay, and then uh the meeting room A B upgrades.
Yeah, so I'm actually, uh Peter has been handling, uh Peter and his team have been handling this project and and he did most of the write-up on that and is met with uh the various vendors. So I'm going to turn that over to Peter to talk about.
Sure. Uh before I do though, I did, I was able to run the numbers on the returns. Um since May, I think we had about 3,700 items returned, which is a little more than 10% of what we had checked out. So we'll keep an eye on it. Um so the A B upgrade project involves our two main meeting rooms, the auditorium that we're in and the community of Gata Hall. Um I don't know if everyone has a good look in the corner over here where we've got the cart and speakers and the laptop and the orange extension cord on the floor and the table is kind of hanging there and the outdated podium with the microphone system built in that no longer works. Um and if you can listen to the speakers that are in the ceiling, you can hear the buzzing that's happening. Um in the community room, there there are no speakers in the ceiling. Um there is no projection, uh projector mounted in the ceiling. So in that room, it's all done from the cart. Uh so we have been talking for probably eight, 10 months now about looking into upgrading these. Um one other thing we run into constantly with presenters is connecting their devices into our system. And there's, it seems like there's always troubleshooting involved. There's always an issue. You know, someone is always has to come in three seconds before the program starts to. So there there have just been a lot of feedback over the years. It's like, you know, maybe it's really time to take a hard look, upgrade some of this equipment. Uh I'm sure you've all had a chance to read through this. I'm not going to read through every part.
This is not for approval tonight.
This is what?
Not for approval tonight. This is kind of letting you know. And then um we're waiting on one additional quote. And then, you know, you can, if there's any questions you have over the next month or so, um in addition to tonight. So.
So if you want to look down about two-thirds of the way to upgrade highlights, uh we are looking at Wi-Fi enabled laser projectors. Uh these are going to give full light projection in both rooms. So, you know, you can look at the screen. Now, it's a little little dim for the lights that we have on. It'd be much sharper, uh much more vibrant. We're also looking at a second one in this room that would orient to the far wall over here because we do have a screen up in here. And the computer breakfast series is often held in this room. And the room is oriented that way. Of course, that involves dragging the cart out and all the cables and the extension cords and everything. Uh similarly, in the community room, a Wi-Fi enabled projector. The Wi-Fi will allow people to cast whatever's on their phone or tablet or laptop into the projector without having to make the connection. Uh sound system into the ceiling, just replacing those with new speakers and having Bluetooth-enabled sound system. Or similarly, uh if there's sound involved that's not coming through the microphone, people can play that from their device, their phone or wherever. Uh currently in this room, the control panel for everything against the wall here, um but the sound system itself, the mixer is in closet over here. So what we're looking at kind of in this corner is something that uh would house all of the components um and allow control from the presenter or staff member um and cables and all that stuff to be housed into a nice, neat, safe, secure um piece of furniture. We are also looking at the uh wall-mounted handheld zoom high-def cameras for live streaming. In other words, this little guy right here would be mounted somewhere along the ceiling so that uh users can remote control during presentations to zero in on the host and livestream it through whatever platform it is, would want to do live streaming.
So I think that's something that obviously that's really hit home recently, right? Our problems with not being as well equipped as we could be to live streaming.
Right. And I think that's key. It's just, we're just not quite as well equipped as we could. We've got various things here that we can kind of push together at the last minute to get it working. Uh we spent, Trent and Jamie and I spent a good chunk of time this afternoon getting this set up to work between Paul and Will, separate from the camera here to record teams live and all that. Um I kept saying, well, you have the upgrade done. It's a lot easier.
He did, literally, like.
I just, I just, we were describing all these different pieces. I was trying to say, cool, that's cool. Yeah, we need that. Cool.
Yeah. And so we also want the two rooms to kind of be very similar. We want a presenter to come in and just be able to do what they need to do. It's very easy to use. The same equipment in both rooms, so you don't have to learn different processes for each room. Um the other big piece of this, uh which I I don't know that we've ever had since I've been here, but I think we've had it sometime in the past, is the system listening. but I think we've had it sometime in the past, is the assistive listening system. So these are a separate transmitter that would be in this room. We're looking at ones that are portable to either room and then body packs that people can use in order to hear presentations better. That's kind of a crucial component for this and we're, we're pretty excited about bringing that.
And I think one of the things, as we got into this project, it's another case of really taking a step back, you know, from where the conversation started. You know, I think the conversation actually started with, with sound. You know, you can hear the white noise. The microphones don't always work. And so as we started to kind of get into some conversations and as I kept prompting Peter, and it was like, okay, we're going to do this. Let's do it right. Let's look at the, you know, the, the whole layout and let's really make sure that we're doing what we can for the next, you know, five to 10 years or more and really look at some of the, you know, based on, yes, Peter said, based on the feedback, based on some of the problems, you know, there, there were a couple, there was at least one program where I got involved in troubleshooting and we really don't want that for our patrons. We don't want that for the people who are presenting to our patrons. And then, no, and then one of the, the other things, like the assistive listening device, that was something when, you know, Peter first came back with the quote. And he's like, well, we could, you know, these are kind of optional or these are kind of optional. And it's like, well, we have an older patron base. Looking at the people who use our rooms, I don't know that it is optional. We're going to do this type of project that again is going to sustain us into the future. I think that it's something that we, we should consider. So, and the women's committee, initially before we'd even gotten any quotes, presenting the idea to the women's committee, they jumped on. And they immediately stepped forward with $20,000. So we're actually having a foundation meeting next week. Basically, this same information, the quote and Peter's write-up, which was very good, will be presented to the foundation. And I'll be asking them, I'm going to do a hard ask for at least $50,000 to $70,000. I think that that is something that the foundation can do. And I think that's something that they probably will. They, they, you know, they didn't really bat much of an eye at upgrading the technology in the children's area in the Storytime Room a couple of years ago. So I think that that is something that, that they, you know, get behind as well. I think that that's something that, that they can then continue to promote as far as things that they've done for the library. So, so that'll be something that we, that we do.
Another, other question is about the children's, I know that they've been recently upgraded, but I do think the idea of being able to stream. I mean, one of the biggest complaints that I hear is about children's program maxing out on numbers and people not being able to get their kids into programs, although they're affiliated. We do a wonderful job writing programs, but our space has limitations. And so the idea of being able to say, we can have this many bodies in signups in, in on location or Storytime, but we can also stream it via whatever, I mean, I think that would be something the community would get excited about. So if they can't get into all the summer programs with the various people to come in, who are wonderful, but, I mean, anyone who does have a side of the children's programs to sign up at nine o'clock, they do it by nine thirty. So the idea of being able to open it up to a wider audience via technology, I think would be very well received by the community.
That's also a, I think that's also just being in the new times that we're in because, you know, if, if three months ago, I don't know that anyone would even consider, you know, well, if I can't get in, you can livestream it. I don't know that that would even be considered by some people. But now in this time, well, one, you know, we're not even, you know, to the point of having a group like that. But in the future, I think that it definitely is something. And they, they actually have the ability, that ability is there now. But it's just something that wasn't thought, like, it's now that triggering our thoughts where, oh, we can do some of this stuff.
Well, I think it's, it's something that I've definitely heard a lot is just the.
Yeah.
The limits to children's programs and being able to open it up to any live streaming will be an option of solution.
Yeah.
And I think it's something that we know and can do, but we're going to have to go on forward.
Right, right.
You know, I looked through this and you all did an outstanding job in terms of this in research and presentation, et cetera, and justifications. But I guess my reaction initially was, wait, maybe we don't want to spend money for something that's going to help with patrons of being in the under presenters, et cetera, because we don't know when that moment's going to come on. But I'm listening to you all now and I'm thinking more than ever, we need to do this now because we may be finding ourselves live streaming programming from now till who knows when we can allow patrons to really come back in the building and answer appreciable numbers. So I think it's really important. I think this enables us to help pivot ourselves in our programming and what our offering is going to be in a couple of months.
And we have this option to be land on our feet. If we do number another Skype, if we got the debt, you know, and we have to go through anything like this again, we'll have all of everything in place to provide even more service.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, being able to Skype in, you know, an author potentially takes, you know, those types of costs down as well. But the, the other factor here is that, you know, we don't have meeting rooms in use right now. So we're not displacing anyone. So now it's almost like it's a, it's a no-brainer to get it done and be able to get in here and, and have people, you know, do that type of work. So, yeah, I would agree with you.
And Jimmy, you may get pushback though, the foundation, because again, these are tough times and maybe the portfolio's down and they don't want to spend a lot of money. So if the foundation isn't willing to meet these needs that you've identified to them, will it come out of budget then? Or how are you going to pay for it if the foundation can't come up with whatever you need?
Yeah, I mean, it, it would be in front of capital. So it would be, and I think that's a consideration that when we get to that point, that we look at what we're doing. There's been some shifts already. We do have that 10-year plan that was in place. So, you know, we, we have been starting to, to push more money over to capital. So we look at, one of the things that we're, we're looking at now is, is just our various expenses as far as, well, is this really needed? Or is this something that we were doing? But when you get over to that capital side, those capital projects and the money that's in the capital, those are things where it's, it's actually propelling us further. And that money is things where even though we're spending it now, we may not use it for the next two or three months, it's still something that either has to be done, should be done, or will be done versus like our, we were, one of the discussions we had was the computer center. And it was on the schedule to replace all of the computers in the computer center. And then, you know, so Jim had gone through looking at some things and then, and that was a, a good point that Peter brought up. He was like, well, wait a minute, do we really want to invest this type of money into these computers, which do work, but aren't really going to be used necessarily by the public that much for the next maybe six months to a year, right? We're, we're potentially not out of this, you know, still for a year. So that's something where we thought, yeah, we could, you know, we can worry about that in another place. That's a shift that we can do to be able to look at things like, you know, being able to provide the technology and the hardware needs for various staff who are working remotely now. So that was a, a shift that we, we were able to do. So I think it, it's a case where we look at, and that's where we do some cost benefits. And we say, if we spend this, this $70,000 or whatever, then, you know, these are the things maybe we're, we're not going to do this year. And we have to, you know, we have scheduled transfers each year as it is for the 10-year plan. And we, we potentially have to do a little more as we go. And this is something where, because it's a technology project, technology projects do not have to be publicly bid, but we are doing our due diligence as far as finding out what, you know, we, we have free proposals that we're looking at and trying to get as close to apples to apples as we can.
Oh, I, I did have one question about the fine print at the very bottom of the agreement, which was there, 1.2 talks about, this doesn't include taxes, fees, charges, shipping, the, the. I'm just wondering, do you have a sense of what that number looks like? If there is an additional number, or maybe, maybe there are none.
Right.
That, that was there, so I just thought I'd ask.
No, that's a good, good question. We have not quite got to that point in conversation with any of the contractors yet. Soundcom, so the quote that's included is one of two. The other one was kind of, and this one was plenty of detailed information. The other one was even less organized. It was just kind of this huge laudity list of stuff. And there really wasn't a way to make sense of, you know, it was for this room, it was for that room. So Soundcom had it organized a little better presentation. We actually have had Soundcom and ATEC out two times in the last eight to 10 months as the project kind of develops. And we had, we're able to get a lot of good feedback from them. Well, we were able to give them, you know, the scope of the project, but also they work in other, they've done work in other libraries. So we've read information from that, like, well, what are you doing at this library? What are you doing at that library? What are people asking for? And then that's how some of this stuff can be developed. Once we get that third quote, we'll take a closer look at the fine print on these and see where shipping lands, where, you know, somewhere.
It's just an additional number because I think it'll, I'm, I'm assuming that there's going to be some shipping and obviously taxes, so.
Well, there would be, we're taxing that.
Okay. So back to them, so maybe some shipping, so. And then I did notice that 1.7 immediately says, and the rest of the terms and conditions are at this rate, which I didn't believe, but I was like, oh, we should probably go look at that, I think. So, however, we should.
Right, yes, and don't do it now because we don't know the word.
I understand, but I just, I just want to, I, I did say, wow, this is a very streamlined how to get the amount of money. And then I read the, the last five, I think, a lot.
Yeah.
Never very easy.
Yeah, and, and that's the other reason where.
And that's encouraging.
You know, specifically, we're trying to get things and, and make sure that we're timing projects so that we give ample time and feedback from the board. And then we're able to, you know, if there are additional questions, we're making sure that, that all the ducks are in a row before we're actually making a formal ask of the board or, or anyone else. So, you know, that, that kind of has evolved into our practice at this point. Anytime that we can, you know, give you guys at least a month. I think that's, and I, I think that seems to work better for us as a group anyways, you know, to do that. So really try not to push anything through like, oh yeah, hey, what about this? And if we have to weigh in on some things, then we weigh in on some things.
So then just to sum up the timeline at the bottom, everything in May, we're expecting to get the quote from their contractor really by the end of this week. We'll do our comparison. We may, if we need to call them back in for clarification, we will. But we're hoping to have some sort of proposal for your approval in June. And then, you know, we talked to them and, and the story changes, obviously now because of the times that we're in, turnaround time, there, there is lead time on getting the equipment shipped to the library. And then, of course, their installation schedule, something we have to work with. As long as we remain close to the public, our availability is pretty good. But they probably have more jobs now at other places that their work is probably picking up a little bit more as well. So then it'll just be the timing, you know, I'm hoping that things go well. Won't be able to see this by the end of the third quarter.
Did they mention whether or not they're having any trouble getting components?
Yeah, so early on, because, and I'm not, I'm not too familiar with it, with the, the trade issues with China and everything, the tariffs and whatnot, that was, that was problematic. There were additional surcharges, there were times when things just weren't being shipped. I'm not hearing that now. Now it's like, things are shut down, work is kind of dried up. But we do know that as people are starting to get back to business, their schedules are, are going to start to fail as well. So there was a time where they're like, you know, we could turn this around and probably get equipment in within a few weeks and get this project done in a month. That's probably not going to be the reality once we're ready for the end of June. But for now.
Thank you very much. We'll look forward to more information then. Anyone have any other questions?
Personal report, Trent?
There is no personal report, is there?
It's listed. Is it another case of where, where, where we need?
We are approving, yes.
Yes, I, I do not remember any interviews you were hiring in the last few months. That's. Yeah, not a report, so.
But we do ask that it be.
Approved, so.
Approved, right, just so in the future, everyone, we're to look back at our minutes.
It's there.
It's, it's exactly, it's there. So even though there is no activity on this report, maybe I have a motion to approve the May 2020 personal reports.
Cindy, so who?
Thank you, Cindy. Second? This is Jill. Thank you, Jill. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm buying. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
You still there, Will?
Yep, okay, thank you. Thanks for checking on me.
Thanks for admitting it.
Jamie, anything else?
I do not have anything else to report.
Um, before we move on to the president's report, did anyone have any questions or comments about the departmental reports? Trent, did you have anything you wanted to specifically discuss from your report for us?
Um, I'm not sure if there's anything you have questions about. It's really the last month has really been about this last two weeks and about next week. Next week, we're bringing back the majority of the staff. We've been communicating with them to make sure that they're prepared. They know what we're doing to ensure all of our staff's safety. All that was in place before we came back last week. And then we were able to refine a few things in procedures. Just, and it's a little bit easier when you're doing it for seven people than you are with 70 people.
Sure.
But we're excited to have people back. I, I feel very good about it. I think we'll get everyone's hours back to normal shortly. We're working on getting that finalized. But I, I, Krista and Rhonda have done a substantial amount of circulation reference. And Stacy has done a lot of help with relieving Charlotte and Dory so that they can actually do some of their, their job off the desk as well. So it's been kind of skeleton crew and they've done excellent work as some of you have realized. So it, I think it's went as well as it could. And I'm glad they were able to offer up as much help as they did. Peter helped it. So we were.
I imagine that.
All, all hands aboard that small crew, so it went fairly well.
Yes, but I don't want you to be too humble. I know how hard you've worked on all of this, basically creating content from scratch. I can only assume it's been one of the biggest challenges you've ever faced.
I mean, it's, it's been a lot of work. It's not completely from scratch. You know, the governor set pretty clear guidelines that both OLC and a lot of libraries have been, you know, sharing what they've been doing. But there's been a lot of people kind of setting what we should do and we just have to refine for how it works here, which is the next big step is going to be reopening in some way to the public. And since those guidelines are outlined, we know what we need to do. It's just our space is tricky for that. So that's the next kind of step. So we're getting staff back in the building first, which is awesome. We can offer a lot of our key services. And then we can figure out how to add a few more people to it. We did, Greg did have me follow him in the fire marshal around, which was enlightening. We have a lot of people in this building. But all three of us agreed that even at, that might not be best practice. And the fire marshal was very helpful in saying, this is potentially what is reasonable, even though this is the real limit. You could, you know, push it up a little bit if you really wanted to, but here's my opinion. And if you want to have the public, you want, you know, some assistance with public explaining why you picked the room, you can say, I was here, I helped set those limits. So we have kind of some room limits, but like, you couldn't have 55 people on the second floor legally, within that 50. So it was really nice having him here and then working through like the process of how we might be using it and then what the real limit should probably be. Which is a lot closer to maybe hang on that floor. Right? So, and it'll be up to us to exactly determine how that's going to be used and what that will be set within those guidelines. But, I mean, we, that'll be the next step and it'll, it'll be a little bit before we get there, but.
Yeah, I have a question. I don't know which, which of the three you'd ask, but I saw in the reports that there were, the first I think of information that there were five people in that first day. And I was wondering if you had any other numbers for how many people have been utilizing that sort of? people have been utilizing that service since we opened that? If not, that's fine. That's not a big
Peter's your, your guy. I, I can say, if he hasn't run the stats, uh, the first eight weeks, I did be slow because you had to have had a whole
Yep.
two or three months go and then be able to pick it up that day.
It also rained out there that day.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's picked up though. Each day, I think it's, you know, we get, uh, near opening in near three to four. It's probably the busiest time for actual curbside. Um, reference has been fairly busy with calls as well. I think this morning, within about three hours, I had, uh, between 11 and 20, um, that, when I was stabbing then. Um, I know there was at least 11 because I found many missed calls on the other phone. They ring at the same time. Uh, and I cleared it out once before then. So, uh, it's, it's been picking up. Um, we're rushing out around three o'clock a couple times and it's pretty consistent around those periods. So it's more than five.
I wonder if we have a feature next month that you're reporting here?
I could, or, you know, if everyone wants a little bit of, uh, getting into Teams, Microsoft Teams, I could just throw it into the board group on Teams.
Are they sure? Yeah, that would be
Sure.
Just a little more practice.
And can we have any sense too, when they have a clean net libraries, we will be offering money so that we can then get into the transport again and be borrowing materials from other libraries other than ourselves?
So what we're actually waiting on at that point is not actually just clean net. Um, so priority dispatch is contracted through the state library. And that is for the entire state. So we're actually looking at, I think they need
Eighty-five percent of the libraries.
Eighty-four percent of all libraries.
Including academic.
Statewide academic. Statewide.
Yeah.
Yeah, including, including the academics.
Yeah, anyone that purchases statewide services, including academic.
Yeah. So that could be a month or so. I think, I think, um, I, I think, you know, sometime in June, hopefully, but it all depends. But I think for the most part, most clean net libraries, they're, they do have on our member site, um, they kind of just listed the libraries. I think for the most part, um, we're all open as far as clean net.
Yeah, I'm looking at it now. Uh, almost every library is listed as doing curbside at least, um, for the month of May. There's a few that go to June 1st. So it looks like for the most part, everyone's open there as far as curbside.
And in case Actually, anything, um, about it anywhere, but the reason that we're doing curbside rather than the drive thru is, is low in traffic. Um, you know, it was something where we had kind of gone back and forth, um, where, you know, obviously it was easiest to open a drive thru. But if 10 people showed up at the same time, you know, the normal traffic pattern for them is to pull in to go to the drive thru. So then we potentially got traffic issues on Hampton or we're trying to queue the parking lot. And that's where I, I really made that hard push that, I mean, there was some serious discussion about it where it's like, no, we really have to do a curbside. It's just the best way to do it because we can't, can't open the drive thru and then close it. Or, you know, um, so that, so if anyone does get a question like, well, why aren't you using your drive thru window? Well, um, it just seemed that, that the most efficient way was for that curbside. So, um, you know, that's what we did.
Just a, a bit of user feedback too. If you wanted to, I don't know if you could change the alpha message when, when you call. When you call for curbside, you call the main number and you go through about, I, I timed it the other day about three or four minutes before there's an option for curbside. So I don't know if that's the number that's called when you call.
I'll be like, if you call for curbside, I did that. Otherwise, let's have for the rest of my, yeah.
Yeah, just, just as a user
Yeah, I think we wanted to
Do we have the live answers information out there at all?
Right. So another part of that live answers product that Jamie was talking about earlier is, um, it's basically a text alternative to that. Um, it's a clean net contract and they, they basically assign a, uh, phone number to every library. So we have our own, uh, phone number that a patron could text to. And you can configure it just like you get, uh, messages from any organization or business that you might text to, like text this keyword. And then that kind of kicks off a conversation, a conversation with the library person that's monitoring that. So Trent and I actually have something scheduled Friday morning to introduce some of the other staff into how to use that. Um, people who have, uh, you know, a phone to text with can just pull in, text pickup, and they, an auto response will send it to them saying, welcome to the Rockefeller Library curbside pickup. Please send us your name and card number. And then once they do that, someone on staff can pick it up, uh, as a live, as a live conversation.
Can we give that number out now to the board or is nobody monitoring that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's not
I have the number.
Regularly monitored?
What's that?
It's not regularly monitored. We can get the number.
I have the number. I just
Oh, you have?
You wanted me to give it to them.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd say Jamie, it's a 14. Yeah. And it's a 14 that way.
All right, Peter, you can do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. What a great service to give. I'm just so impressed. And just thinking when I had so many babies and so many car seats, how much I would have utilized. So, all right. All right, here you go. Anything else, Trent?
No, unless you have a question.
Thank you so much. All right. Any other departmental questions of the report? Move on to the president's report then. Few things to discuss. Um, I think you probably saw from Trent's report that we participated in a Zoom presentation of the $2,500 Cox Charities grant that was submitted by Stacy Hayman. And, um, it was actually a very nice little presentation they did. There were a couple of executives from Cox Charities there. And we had a video recording by Representative Anthony Gonzalez giving us a shout out as his hometown library. And yeah, that was very nice. Stacy's been doing such a great job. We're very proud of her. Great to hear her, her great work. I also wanted to thank Peter for doing our team streaming. Did a great job. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. I think it was very helpful to all of us. Um, and it just really shortened that merry curve, right? Did anyone have anything they'd like to add to that?
Thanks for being patient. I feel like I was a slow starter on that one, but
No, no, it was good. It's quite involved. So thank you for that, Peter.
You're welcome.
Um, you'll have noticed from Jamie's report that the, um, school board has said they have received no additional applicants for the board vacancy. So that is still open until the 30th. But Cindy has, uh, given us the notice that she's willing to re-up. So thank you very, very much for your work. And then also speaking of the school board, we were supposed to get together for their June 10th committee of the whole meeting. We have postponed that with all of the challenges of doing things remotely or certainly trying to get together in person. Uh, so you are all now free on June 10th. And we will reschedule probably, hopefully, for sometime in the fall as we're back to where we're normally working for that. That is all that I have. Committee reports building to browse. Dan?
Good luck.
Personnel, Dave?
We haven't met, but, uh, committee members behind the Outlook for a team, you know, we're working on some stuff.
Any new business for anyone?
I did have a question for the, so that or in the Microsoft system, for the review questions that are being viewed, we should be using that to get the information.
Yeah. So you would, you would, so if you, I, I'm, I'm not quite sure what your process is. If you're filling out like a Word document, you would do that and email that to Dave. You, you can actually share it. Um, so you have the cloud storage. So some, what I would do is like, I would create a document and I would just share it with like Peter and Trent, for instance. And they would actually, they could actually interact on that document directly with me. But I don't know that we're necessarily completely to the point yet with all of you. So I would say, you're used to attaching a document and sending it. And so I would do that. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, this is for me to, personally, you know, they weren't just attach it to
Within the Outlook, yeah. So you would go in, yeah, you would access the Outlook app and then you would, um, compose a message to Dave. And then you would attach your document in that message and send it through Outlook to his library account. Yes. Any, any and all board communications should go through your Outlook. I assume you're all using the Outlook app, right?
Yeah.
By symbol.
Okay. Any new business?
Uh, just talk real quick, uh, just to give you guys a heads up. We're, we're getting to the point where we need to renew our Google Tech contract for service. It's the self-check system. Uh, it's happens every, end of June it expires. So, uh, unfortunately, next month we'll have it's just a little over 10,000. Um, that's to support self-checks, all the RFID components, the case at the front. Uh, so it's a one-year contract.
And it's always a one-year contract, isn't it?
Initially, it was five. And then, um, we were going to try to do an additional five, if you recall, I believe, two years ago. And then we started looking at, well, what kind of technology do we need and then that I made it self-checks. And so then we gotta just flip to the yearly, we're kind of not limping along, but we're just kind of taking our time like, all right, so let's just see what the next year brings us. Because, uh, you know, especially now, you know, we really start to think about that conversation of, okay, well, if we had more self-checks and we spread those out, is that a way that we can, you know, maintain the social distances and not, you know, have our staff affected? You know, so the conversation kind of changes. So it's, it's really just renewing that support contract for the next year. I think eventually, you know, potentially the things are gonna even get, um, you know, they're not gonna want to support them. They, I mean, they have to. But, you know, but potentially that kind of increases a little bit as it goes and, you know, depending on parts and stuff. So, um, and that was kind of that shift in, in our mindset too, where we really need to just think of those as technology and computer systems. Um, that should be on a regular, even though they're very expensive computer systems, they should be on a somewhat regular routine schedule where, you know, maybe every six to seven years, you know, yeah, we're gonna have to spend this, you know, whatever thousands of dollars to, um, you know, to replace them or have some type of, well, we're gonna, you know, update a self-check a year or something like that. So it's just kind of buying us time.
So the license needs to be required by the end of June?
Um, yeah, there'll be time. We did this last year as well, where at the June board meeting, uh, it was approved. It doesn't affect July 1st, but they're good with the day before. Um, yeah, so we're, we're fine.
Very good.
Sure.
Anything else, anyone? I have a motion to adjourn now. So, good natured meeting. Thank you all of us. That's good. Thank you, Jill. All right, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eight point six. Thanks.